I call to order the planning commission public hearing in a regular session. Cape Charles Center 500 Caswell, October 1st. Roll call please.
Sandra Salinger.
Olive here.
Strube here, McCoy here.
Rosson brother. Show that we have the form. Public hearing. The Cape Charles Town and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, 16:00 PM. Cape Charles, Civic Center 500 Caswell Avenue, to receive comments on the following: An application for conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit at Nine Park Road, tax map number 83 Alpha 3-1-289. Proposed text amendments to zoning ordinance, Part 2, Section 2.9, adding two definitions. Do we have any public comments, please? Okay, so. No public comments? Uh, we have no public comments.
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Do we have an acquit from him, or do not they follow process? And what the record is?
Well, we should, we gotta talk about this. This is just a public hearing. Well, we're gonna talk about that in actual.
Meeting.
In an actual meeting. This is a public hearing for anybody that would have concerns. With the, since we have no public hearing, only motion to close the public hearing. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge. Troy, make the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic, courts of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You see it? Chair, can we, the Congress? Yes. So. Show it up. Bianca, Bianca. Solve that problem.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any public comments, Paul? Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda format?
I'll approve the agenda format.
Okay, you got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Do we have comments on the minutes as, as presented?
Just one thing that everybody noted about, by the nature, we just mentioned for the record, the, on that staff report item, about the nine, a, Nine Park Road, it backs up to Madison. It says in the, in the minutes that it backs up to Randolph. I think that's, it'll be corrected in the final minutes, sir.
Okay, so, I have, I have two comments on the new business. B, comprehensive plan update. Parentheses, on the second paragraph, parentheses, four, says Diana, Bianca, and Bill Strand were working on the statement. It should be working on the, working on the vision statement. And then, on the next one, it should, it should say, you see, everything needs to be in present tense there, and that, and that. And we got, we got past tense and present tense, so whatever, but anyway, and then on number five, Paul Rosson was working on the goals. It should be Paul Rosson and Dennis McCoy are working on the goals for the scope topic areas. Okay? That's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
Right, do I have a pretty good motion that we accept the minutes for September 3rd as presented with the noted corrections or updates to the comprehensive plan update section?
Second.
And motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Reports. Okay. Everybody has seen the reports from the Town Planner, the State Organizer Review Board, part of, and none of the other boards met. And the Town Planner is doing some great, wonderful things. New Urbanism, A and P D C, Healthy Communities. All right. Anything, any, anything on reports? Anybody have any reports? Okay, if not, we'll move on to unfinished business, comprehensive plan update. You have packet as presented to you. What you had in the, in the agenda packet electronically, did not have the, the updated survey. As you remember, in the last meeting, we asked you to get comments to Sandra by the 20th. Only person that presented comments was Paul, thank you, sir.
Detective.
So. It's been rewritten to include the majority of what Paul provided. Basically, the changes. On the first page. It used to be, it had one to five years, under section one, that's now less than five. And you added, I do not live here, under residency. I worked in Cape Charles was added. Okay? That's, that's all on the first page. The second page. There was nothing, under section two. Section three. For development, I mean, on the third page, at the top, the first thing says encourage development of affordable workforce housing, that workforce was added. That should be all on that. Comments, suggestions. The next page. General concerns. The, there, if you go halfway down, it says lack of affordable workforce housing was added, instead of affordable housing, workforce was added. And then, under other, it says clues, if there's really any concerns, not listed, but it must be considered as part of your, of your top five concerns. The next section, number two, same down at the bottom, other, must be part of your top five concerns, should be four concerns. You ask?
Top five.
Okay, and then, on the last page, under your voice, there's, under the bullets, there was no other before, and that's been added, other please list. And then. We asked them to put their name and address. Thank you for such a good job. Tell your, tell your, tell your committee, they did a great job. Now. We'll talk about this in a second, but I just, the thing is the timing of this and the distribution of this. We were told that the North Hampton County is going to do a survey, too. And, but, you know, hey, I wanna get the survey out. I can't wait for them, so. We need to get it out. We need to entertain methods of how we get it out. We've talked about this before, that we can put it on the website, the Gazette. We can put a link, we can put a link to the, to the, on the town's website, in the post, the Mirror, the Happenings. And. I guess we could say, a hard copy can be picked up at, at the town office. And then we, we talked about getting it out to businesses, specifically, we asked maybe get it to the restaurants with a, a means, a box or something. And put on there something like, Comp Plan Survey, and then give them hard copies so that they can give that to their people, their diners or whatnot.
I would make one recommendation, that we post a single page notice at the pole in front of the light, in front of the post office, saying which restaurants have those things there, so that people passing by, even though you don't have a, a form, you're pointing in the direction.
I've also talked to some of the businesses, and people don't mind having it in the shop. If somebody wants to pick one up, we can say that most businesses will have them.
I can ask, I can ask Main Street if they would take some of these and, and distribute it to the.
Diane and I worked on a list on our way back from the first session of the planning training. And it, I think we got a pretty good list, and we'll share, have you shared it out yet?
No.
Because I think we were trying to bring some as much as we could, and I think we've captured a lot of folks, in terms of overall, so we'd be happy to share that, because I think, I think you'll like it.
You want us to share that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, we were talking about stakeholders.
Okay, that's gonna be after the survey.
Oh, so you don't wanna get surveys to these people, too? Would they, are you planning on giving surveys at stakeholder meetings?
I wanted to get the surveys out, get the results, and then, and then we would, we would find out the stakeholders, who we wanted to touch, basically stakeholders. You know, in reality, when we had our workforce, our work session, workforce session here, that was one of the questions, too, were the stakeholders. And we got great input. Now, the thing is, is we need to try to identify people in those categories that we can ask to be questioned on, and we, we also need to make sure that we do this in a diverse fashion. All right? So. And get their input. I would hope that we get a cross-section on the survey, businesses, community leaders, that would, that would fill the stakeholders. If, if, if we come up with a stakeholder and they didn't do the survey, then I think they should do the survey. It's open for discussion, I mean.
Yeah, I think stakeholder meetings prompt more discussion and bouncing of ideas back and forth. As opposed to here filling the blank.
Right, right. Okay, so, is that, is that a pretty good plan as far as distribution goes?
Did you have any other? We, uh.
I don't know whether ours was so much stakeholders, as it wasn't distribution.
It kind of was, you know, trying to come up with groups of people that we wanted to make sure got the survey.
Right.
And then, when we do have stakeholder meetings, we talk about sending something prior to the meeting, and tailor each of the questionnaires at that point, to the particular group.
Okay, so when you say identify people that would get the survey. I will tell you that we could, there are a couple of resources that we can, we can ask if they would take surveys and give them to some people, like, Diana Davis comes to mind, she has a very good rapport with the black community, and, and so, she would talk and be willing to do that. Another person is Tom Goddard, who owns Grace Funeral Service. But we also wanna make sure that we have opportunities here for visitors, for tourists, to weigh in as well. I mean, they, they come here and use this town, so.
Who else did you have as, as groups that probably should, we collect their input from?
Let me just read real fast. Realtors and rental agencies, business owners, which would be restaurants, hospitality, hotels, long-term citizens, long-term renters, full-time residents, part-time residents, Bay Creek, Marina Village, Rotary, Friends and Library, Citizens for Central Park, New Roots, Board, Christian School, Rosenwald School, builders, Cape Charles Yacht Club.
Okay. These are all stakeholders?
Well, we.
Okay, they're, they're stakeholders.
They're people who live here or who do things here. Yeah.
You're all people we want here from.
Right, absolutely. Do you have, do you have churches on there?
I think churches is on there.
Is churches on there?
Uh, I don't think it is, but I'd put it on there.
Christian school on there?
Yes, Christian school is on there.
I'd like to make a comment on one of the groups you mentioned. Citizens for Central Park got a formal notification from the town that they no longer have access to any, to the park for their functions.
They just got it?
They've had it for the besting the better part of the month.
No, I thought they were working.
Yeah, please, please, correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't understand. That is wrong. Something was said, I guess, at the end of one of the concerts that was incorrect. By a certain.
No, 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 I got this from CCP themselves, it wasn't, wasn't?
No, but they've been at meetings with our town manager and our, well, she's no longer, Jim Ellis, who's the, she's the community relations manager now, and they will be having concerts, but there, it was, it was a lot of money, so the town would have a number of concerts also, but they were never told that they could not use the park, never.
We, yeah, that needs to be recorded, because there's a lot of people thinking the same way I just heard, so, yeah, right, okay, thank you.
I'll let the town manager know that we didn't say something. So now, we, so now the town's having concerts and? Yeah, they're all, they're working together.
That, that, and that was key, that was key, you know, working together is all we're asking for at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
And I saw a picture of the park, which, I think, was it that the citizens?
That's correct.
Or the, I mean, it suggested things are going great guns. With all the picnic tables.
Okay. Rock, rock pointer. So. That, that's a good list, I think that needs to be included as, you know, stakeholders that we're gonna reach out to, so if you could get that list, just Tracy, so she has that, and we can have that incorporated for our next meeting.
Uh, now, when you say list to Tracy, you're talking about?
What you just read off.
I can give her this list, but you're not saying, give her all the names of the people.
No, 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 just, just a list. Okay, so. I need your, your input on, are we ready to send this survey out? It's gonna take a couple of weeks just to get, get the flow going, and I can work, and, and I can work, if you wanna help me work, I can work with the Town Planner to get this finalized, I can email everybody and say, this is, this is what's going on, and we can go for that, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna dally-dally around with this. If we can get it, we still have a lot of people coming to town, and we can leave it out for a while, I mean, I mean, we can leave it out and even use it. I've seen other surveys that have been out for six weeks, seven weeks. The town, the North Hampton County's talking about doing it for like, I don't know, a long time, so. We just need a good sample, if we can get, and our goal was to have probably, approximately 200 responses.
Do we need on the form, who to return this to?
Yeah, that, that needs to be turned, returned.
We couldn't decide on that, we're just trying to.
Well, I think it should come to the Town Planner, to the planning, to the planning office.
You didn't address, you know, the name or the address, so that somebody, if they're gonna mail it.
And it's also for accountability, we don't want somebody to stat, stat figure, and you know, so that's why the name and address.
Just one question, under development, it says explore options insights for the development of a community center. So now that the YMCA is coming our way, do we really wanna open that up again?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, that's done to the town.
I get it, I think that's great. All that traffic.
I don't know if that's really gonna be a community center affair in there, I don't know. I, I know, you know, it's gonna, it's a lot, so, but, so. We've had, you don't know how much pain we had last, think about a community center, and you know, this, this was a partial fix for that, this building.
Two more, two questions to add. Email, that email that I sent out, I collected, we collected the emails from.
Okay, that's, that could be put on there, too.
Have we discussed about, do you, you want people to put their email address in there? I don't know.
I, I don't think so, but he was saying that you could submit it by email.
All right, well, I sent out, you know, the community, or the workshop, there was the update, and we got a bunch of emails, and I sent that out, so I've got like a.
You got that list, you got that 50 people that were, that, and they, they should be, they should definitely get, you know, sent to them.
Is it practical to set up a separate email box for the receipts, like surveys app, whatever?
Yeah, we've already got Comp Plan at Cape Charles over.
Okay, but.
Not received any emails yet.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's good. This way it doesn't put it in your inbox.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, or at least I know that, you know, it's to Comp Plan, so I can put it in that folder. And then B and Bs in hotels.
Yes.
The lobbies of the.
Now, I know, you brought up a question. Could this be put on Survey Monkey?
I haven't dealt with Survey Monkey before, but I'm sure we can figure it out.
See, see, Survey Monkey, you can, you can manipulate, and you can get, you can draw in all the responses and you can sort it. And that's the good thing, instead of hand counting.
Adam's the one that really thinks that's good.
And I, and in that way, you can send it out to email this, and that is another way to get it out.
That's a very suggestion, Bill, for visitors, because they may want to be here.
Well, you know, we have, we have.
Feedback from them, via electronic means, not having to do some paper.
Well, that's, that's right. I mean, I wanna, we wanna reach out to everybody, and I think that that's easily can be done, it's just a matter of transcribing this over to Survey Monkey, Survey Monkey's free, so.
And I'm unsure sorting wise, if you go down this pan, they probably put all these and put it on some ass there, you're not gonna be able to sort and say, okay, so what do people who own a home in Cape Charles think? You won't be able to separate that out, because it's going to be combined with everybody else's in here. They'll, they'll have identified themselves here, but unless you're recording it individually on a separate sheet, you're not gonna be able to separate out unless you use something like Survey Monkey, and I'm not sure what its capabilities are.
And, and they can do that, they can do that.
So then they will, the more reason we want to go that route.
And you know, I can, I can, I can ask the board of directors of Cape Charles Main Street, who has an extensive email list, if they think that this would be a good thing to send to, they have various email, but they have all the businesses, they have, you know, they have it all sorted out in constant contact, so I could ask them if they would be going to do that, and we can see, that's just another avenue to get the word out.
No, I hesitate to say this, but, which group below includes your age? Since the vast majority of us are over 60, do we might have broken that over 60 down a little bit? I think it should be that.
I think mostly over, I think that's. Any other questions on this? Okay, so. Can I get a, can I get a motion to approve this survey as, as, as it's written?
With the addition of return?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the survey as presented with the added addition of return address.
Second. Any further discussion? I will work, if you'll get, if you'll get, get that to Tracy, I will work with Town Planner Zach, and for distribution, and I'll make sure that the commissioners are kept informed, I don't have that, it's going, okay? All right.
Do you want to?
Yeah. So, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's all right.
I'm getting old. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Sorry. I had a, I seen a moment there. All right. All my stuff died on there. Okay, so we're now, we're now, the next thing is, I wanna make sure, anybody have an update on, on their assignments? Paul, you have with you what Paul and Dennis, it's part of that Comp Plan Update, you have, Paul and Dennis came up with the goals, that's from the current Comp Plan. And then, Mike and Sandra, started with, started with the scope and outline, that's where they stand. I think the only other thing was, I had, Diane and I had the vision. And we, she and I need to talk, but we have the vision that's in the current Comp Plan, and the question is, is that sufficient right now, going forward with what we have? So. What else have I missed, anything? Okay. So. Please keep working. Dennis and, Dennis and Paul are kind of finished for now. You, if you need some additional help, let me know.
Now that I have this, I can work more with.
The word inception here is the same scope, I guess, because we're doing scope analysis.
The word inception here is the same scope, I guess, you're doing scope and outline. The output is supposed to be plan, outline and scope report, I would assume.
The. Lisa. You have plan, outline and inception report is, is the output, but you're gonna develop this goals. I mean, develop the, the comprehensive plan scope and outline, okay?
So the report is the scope and outline.
And in, in reality, in reality, the goals from that developed scope and outline is, did they change? From what, from what.
The four is the vision and goals. The goals are in the four. So ours is, is the scope and outline report.
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm saying is to draft the goals for the scope topic areas. You're gonna come up with the scope topic areas in your, in your outline.
So, so are you looking for, when you say outline, are you looking for essentially a table of contents?
No.
Well, you know, I think that's, I think that's kind of like what we're, we're talking about. We have, we have a table of contents that everybody got, but I mean, you can go, you can go further on that. Because we're, we're going to, over here in the last phase, we're gonna go chapter by chapter, all right? So.
So. Well, I'm just looking at what the current plan, how it's organized.
But, but do you want the current plan reviewed against the other five or six that you sent?
Well, I said, I said, yeah, to see if we missed something.
Oh, okay.
If we missed something that these other, these other towns and cities have that, that we might have wanted to incorporate. That's, that's the way.
Okay, so was it the contents, is the what we missed or potentially missed?
So the, the current plan has an executive summary and the outline really to me is essentially the executive summary, not a list of the chapter items. So that's my take on it because there's nothing else.
What is that?
The third thing that we.
Are you telling me, are you saying that, that like the, the outline and the executive summary? What is, what is that? I don't understand that.
They're basically similar because there is nothing in the revision that talks to the executive summary, unless we're just gonna throw that out and not have an executive.
So usually an executive summary in anything that I've ever gone is written after you do.
Oh, yeah, it could be that, but it.
You do, after you put together.
Yeah, it's actually the final, yeah, only the final thing.
So. But that's, that's, that's what I was, that's, that's what I, I perceive to be the outline. And then the scope is a little bit more detail of the outline. That's how I, you know. The scope is the overall.
We didn't have a workshop to define this a little bit.
No, we could do that, we could do that.
I mean, the scope represents the, the area over which this plan is gonna cover, you know? And that's what, that's the way we're developing the scope. It's not just a town because we care about what happens at the intersection of the, and that defines the area, but that's the scope.
Hampton County plays a important role in, in this process.
But yeah, I think to make sure that we're.
Okay, I'll get, I'll, you and I, you and I will talk.
And anybody, I think, to compare what we've got, what we're doing, make sure there's an interconnecting of that.
And we had talked about a work session too.
Yeah.
And we thought we, it would be good to do the current vision and then goals and objectives for a workshop.
Yeah, but I, I would go for yes, but until you get community input, would be spending time on goals that just the seven of us are looking at. That could be certainly changed by, by the community.
Not to mention the outline.
So a lot of this is updates, I think, you know, I, I'm fine. The way I set up my table here was to, to look at strengths and weaknesses, opportunities based on what I extracted.
Right.
Based on what I hear from the community that gets updated, either we confirm it or we add to it or delete. The same with the goals from 2016, some of which are done, they can come off, some of which we don't wanna do, they'll come off. Others will wanna retain and they get lifted and put into the second part of our, our current goals.
Right.
So that's the way I, I've used that as a template for.
Plus there's other inputs that we've had and we've gotten that from, I mean.
Because it's a basis you wish to jump.
But I, I will take, I will, I will mention, for example, our transportation section in our comp plan now is kind of, it's, it's.
Okay, but I'd be waiting for VOD development, at least with their piece or, or. And then BBC come in, you know, and then from there.
But I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes to the transportation plan that VOD may not even have. Like our community trail should be part of our transportation plan.
All right, but I'm assuming downstream you're gonna have these topics broken out and assigned to people.
Yes, that's correct.
Paul, you got transportation, here are the inputs now and the community inputs and go from there.
Right, right, right.
But just, just what I have on transportation now is in terms of an outline. Six, 2000, since 2016, there has been a significant change in transportation. The railroad that served Cape Charles since the late 19th century has ceased to exist. The demise has opened up an opportunity to develop 40 acres of former railroad property adjacent to the harbor. More will be covered under land use.
Do we need to have a work session here this month? To go in more detail on the scope, the outline and the goals? Yeah, well, we have, we have, we have the third Monday of the month. It is set aside for alternate and for additional thing. Do we, but do we want to meet on the third Monday, which is 21st of October? Do we need to?
Yeah, well, I think we do.
I do too, I mean, if we want.
Well, what time are you talking about?
Six o'clock or something like that.
Okay, there's already a streetscape meeting, are you going to that, Zach?
I don't know.
You don't, okay, I won't go to even that.
Okay, so let's do it. Is that agreeable? 21st, six o'clock here.
Comp plan.
Comp plan. It's, it's, it's a work session.
What do you want us to do to be prepared?
It's a work session, so that means that we can come to an agreement, but we can't vote on it.
Right.
But can I understand what we're supposed to be looking, I mean, how, yeah, I'm going right. Get us, get us on the same page, right?
And I'll get with you before to make sure we have it, that is, it still has to go out. So the 21st, it means you have to put that out, have to have everything in about a 15, right? All right. Okay, anything else on the comp plan? Thank you all for the draft survey. Thank you, Kim, Samper. All right. Next thing is. Item seven, A. Staffing for. I have 7D. I'm sorry, guys.
Page 20.
I know I'm on page 20, but I'm just trying to figure out where this is on the, on the agenda. I had an agenda here somewhere. Now it's, oh, here it is. Okay, so do this. Next is new business, proposed text amendments to zoning ordinance, article 2, section 2.9, adding two definitions. Put that's seven A, right? Okay, so he's got two more definitions here, hardship and variance. I asked Zach, I said, we have a, we have a definition for a variance already. In section 2.9. Can you explain why this one is in here? Is that, I guess I would replace the one that's in there in the output with it. Because even the guiding document that's in the Code of Virginia has a variance that talks about shape, size or area of a lot. And I think our current variance definition talks about that too, and this doesn't have anything in there. This just talks about hardship.
So hardship would identify what would, so basically when you're asking for a variance, you're asking for a variance because of the hardship. So the hardship would identify the, what you just mentioned inside. It's, it has three, like within the ordinance, it has three specific criteria that they have to meet. For hardship, for it to be physical hardship. The only reason that I'm proposing, so how this came about is hardship needed a definition. So when I looked at hardship, variance also, you know, those two kind of go coincide with one another. So I looked at variance and pulled the Diane and our variance is a paragraph long. So I was just trying to simplify it, but I understand what you're saying as well, if the Code of Virginia. I can look further into the Code of Virginia's definition for variance and see it.
Well, that's a paragraph, it's about a paragraph long.
Is it, okay. Maybe this is, isn't the same as what we currently have?
No, it's, 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 it says, means, variance means in the application of the zoning ordinance, a reasonable dear deviation from those provisions regulating the shape, size or area of a lot or parcel of land or the size, height, area, bulk or location of a building or structure when strict application of the ordinance would unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property and such need for a variance would not be shared generally by other prospects by other properties provided such variance is not contrary to the purpose of the provided, of the ordinance. So, you know, basically, but it, you know, again, it's Middle East stuff. So, but that, that's, that's out of us. 15 dot two dash two, two zero one of your definitions.
So if it says under variance, a modification of specific provisions of the zoning ordinance granted when strict enforcement ordinance would cause undue hardship. Since you don't have what you're saying, lot size, I mean, somebody think that means size of sign or?
So then you go to hardship and it would say.
Physical characters just.
Exactly.
Okay.
Not the personal financial or self-imposed circumstances of the owner or user.
I personally really like these two definitions.
Okay, well, you know, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to look at this because this has to go, it has to go to town council. And, you know, you got, you got a person on that, the town council that, that deals with this stuff every day. So she may, she may, she may have her own things, but I, you know, I, I just threw that out. And we do have, already have a definition in there, but if you're trying to say because of the hardship, you know, I can, I can see that, so.
So the three, the three criteria, just, it's section 2.6.2. One is that the strict application of the ordinance would produce undue hardship. So if you don't have a definition for hardship, like what does that even mean? So that's where that came from. That such hardship is not shared generally by other properties in the same zoning district and the same vicinity. And then three, that the authorization of such variance will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property and that the character of the district will not be changed by the granting of the variance. But it does, I mean, it really doesn't specifically state what you're saying the Code of Virginia states, so. I think that's a valid point to look at.
Okay, well, so why don't we, why don't we defer this and you take a look at that and see.
Can you tell me that code section again, 15 dot?
15 dot two dash two, two zero one. All right.
So again, if the word hardship that is in variance is totally in accord with the definition hard above, then that, I think that what it says, when I'm concerned, if it talks about undue hardship, it means like there's levels of hardship. And so I'm not used to hearing hardship, it's just, to me, it's a personal kind of thing, so, but I'm trying to live with what you're saying. So undue hardship means there can be degrees of hardship. Because it's not like a black and white thing, either there is or isn't, there's degrees of it also.
Now, I didn't check the Code of Virginia to see if they had definition for hardship yet. But their variance, their variance does not have the word hardship in there.
Yeah.
So, so thank you. Any other, any other thing we have? Okay.
But just a, if you do change, if we've had a public hearing, do we have to have another public hearing?
No, we haven't had a public hearing.
This one is definitely.
Now, this was the public hearings today for this, for this piece, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I believe you're right, we have to have another one if it come in or is.
If we make any changes.
Yeah, it's a substantial change.
Okay.
Even if we don't make changes, we have to have one.
No, it's been approved.
Of course, it just has hope.
I mean, it's been, it's been passed a public hearing, it's a resolution.
Yeah, if it doesn't change, then I don't have to.
All right, but if you could just get back to us, we could, we.
Definitely.
All right.
For those of you in the audience, the discussion there plays to the constraints that the planning commission and the town is, is bound by the state of Virginia. We're in a, we're in a Dixon state.
Dillon.
Dillon, sorry, Dillon. Which means we can only do what the state allows us to do. So you gotta get their buy-in and that's what he's trying to do is make sure we're in alignment with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can be more sure if they're not.
That's right.
All right, moving on to conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit at Nine Park Row, tax map number 83 Alpha 3-1-289. We, we had this last month. We all saw, heard what it was, staff recommends that, the planning commission recommend approval. It's all in accordance with all the provisions of the ordinances. Any discussions?
I have a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve this to go to town council for Nine Park. Park Row.
Second. So I have a motion and a second for to allow an accessory dwelling unit at Nine Park Row. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, the next one is a conditional use permit to allow a residential dwelling unit above a commercial use in the C1 zoning district at 316B Mason Avenue, tax map number 83 Alpha 3-1-611A, set up public hearing. All right. So this is, staff has done this. Proposed project meets all the provisions, the ordinance. I, I, just for your information, I, I asked a question, this is, this is, this is the property next to Bayland State Tackle. Industry upstairs unit.
So is that the one that's like between where Invergia and it's fantastic, it's like right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the difference.
The only, the only access to that property is through the back, up the stairs, that you don't have to go through the commercial property to get to it, so. And we, they want to make it into a, an apartment, so. We're trying to, we're trying to, that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is to get more livable units.
Yes, please.
So, that's a good thing.
I had two comments on here, one, it, and it's for code enforcement there, adequacy of just one stairwell to upstairs residence, I don't know the answer to that, but.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
So I asked our code official, he said that if it's one unit, it has to have, it can have one entrance, but it also has to have a ingress, or a way to get out of the bedroom. So he would have to have a window in his bedroom, substantial size enough to get out in case of an emergency, so it doesn't even have that ladder or anything like that, is what he said.
Or the other, the other thing I wanted, the ingress and egress easement, I'd like to see the applicant bring that to the next meeting, you know, relying on an owner established, it is not adequate to my mind.
And this is a personal easement, or is this actually?
No, that did, easement, so the owner, as most people know here, but the owner of Bayland State Tackle is Jeff Brady, who's also the code official, I should have just put Jeff Brady in the staff report, I don't know why I didn't. But he, I talked to him today, he said that he, he could pull up his deed and show it, and, so I can probably provide that at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, I make a motion that we set a public hearing for this particular item for November fifth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Good. Uh, conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit at five oh five zero one, tax will allow new tax map eighty-three A three dash one dash three seven seven, set of public hearing.
So why do we have this extra one?
Yeah, so I don't, I, I'm not gonna make it too simple, I tried to map it for, I put garage, that's a two-story garage, it's really a one and a half story cottage, an existing cottage that's used, I believe currently as a, like storage. And then there's like a, that's kind of like an attic doorway from what I'm envisioning, the owner can speak to it, because they're here, but that would be, continue to be stored. And there's, so I amended the staff plan, or the staff report, it doesn't change my recommendation or any of the, doesn't change that it wouldn't meet the ordinance in any way. But there will be two parking spaces located on the driveway, which has access from the alley, instead of two spaces in the drive as well, so.
I move with public hearing number of fifth for this one also.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make sure this is all cleaned up as far as the description goes, and you know, or parking spots.
Okay, it's got a two-car garage and two cars, and two, two cars behind it.
It's not a two-car, it's not a two-car garage.
So the amended plan shows in red where it's been.
Okay.
Yeah, so the red areas are.
Parking spaces.
Yeah, it's not a garage area.
Right, I got it, I have, sure, there's actually four spaces there.
On the driveway?
Yes.
Okay. When, in your, in your letter of intent, it said, it said four on-street parking spaces.
It said four.
Four on-street parking spaces, and we don't, we, either way, this one, at least it's meeting.
All share, all share is the intent.
Okay, it's meeting, which would be one space.
Could I ask also, would it be possible on these accessory dwellings to include a paragraph like you do on simple family residential, my stroke, just for everybody?
Specifically for?
Just to tell us what.
What an accessory dwelling unit is, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. That'll be on the, the public hearing next, next month. All right. Next proposed text amendments to zoning ordinance are before Section four dot five and four dot six review.
This is yours, yeah. All right, so we've gotten, we've gotten A through F. That's great.
So to C.
Yeah, we did not get to C, so, we can go to C. So in the staff report, I mentioned that Paul had given me a model ordinance. And we discussed it a little bit, and I incorporated that into the shared parking. So everything in red is gonna be essentially word for word from that model ordinance. So C one, and I'll just let y'all look at it, I won't read each one unless you have to, or to clarify anything.
Are we going down to the red parts, where it's sort of in red, instead of where we have it up?
So.
For all the red parts?
Yeah, so just, the red is the actual ordinance, the, or the draft ordinance with the updates. So the intent, when I do this staff report, because it's so much, is to, it would be helpful for you guys, if y'all print out the staff report and the draft ordinance and have them side by side, so you can look at like C one, and then you can just look at it to the right, it would be C one, and then we work for word what's the proposed change.
Well, perhaps you could provide that for us.
Well, I mean, if you have a suggestion of how to look, I would definitely, maybe.
You're saying hard copy, provide a hard copy?
Oh, 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 provide a hard copy.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, but, I thought you meant.
Yeah.
Okay, I got, I got that.
I kind of wanted to go up to where it was part of your staff report, and you were going to share parking.
To discuss it.
Yeah, as opposed to discussing.
So just kind of C one, what I put in my staff report, and then y'all got any comment?
Well, you have here, applicant can provide a written request to zoning administrator for a shared parking arrangement during the permitting process. What is the beginning of the permitting process, and what is the end of that process?
Well, I mean, permitting, it's just reviewing the plans and things like that, so that's not specifically stated in the ordinance, it would be just a written request from the applicant. Obviously, I would receive that request prior to, or like as they're going through their permitting process, rather than, oh, hey, we, you know, after the fact.
Well, would that be before a building permit is given?
Yes.
So that is prior to the building permit?
Yeah, so when you're coming over.
Well, it's in conjunction with, are you submitting it for a building permit, and along with that, I need to address parking?
Well, I wanna make sure that we're not giving a building permit without the parking being totally done.
No, so the way that the allocation process worked is, they would provide construction plans, and then they also provide a site plan and a landscape plan, and that site plan would show their parking. So me and Jeff are reviewing that application together, in a sense, he's reviewing, you know, construction part, I'm reviewing the zoning site plan part, and then if it went through the historic, obviously, or Harvard, I would obviously be looking at the elevations as well, and then relation to height, et cetera, but. All that to say, we're looking at it together, and we're not gonna, we both sign off on a, on a building permit. A group permit.
I'm, I'm not sure you're quite getting to where I am, this says for a shared parking arrangement. And that specifies what you have to do to get this shared parking arrangement. And what I wanna make sure is Paul, this is done and signed, sealed, delivered before the person gets a building permit.
So that is under C seven. Shared parking agreements shall be fully executed and submitted to zoning administrator for review prior to receiving certificate of ownership.
Well, that's not acceptable. And the reason I'm saying that is this, the certificate of occupancy is the last thing you get.
It is.
So you go over there for the certificate of occupancy, and all of a sudden you realize that the shared parking agreement is not good, it's not right, are we gonna say, oh, well, knock your building down, or, you know, you can't use it, no, we're never gonna say that. So we really need it before the building permit.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So I'll change that to before the building permit is issued.
Yeah. And all this approval by the zoning administrator of your C two, C three, is this just that they have brought in the proper application information, or are you actually approving the shared parking arrangement?
I'm approving, I'm reviewing, essentially that, that could be approved by the development department, approved by, it could be really anything, but zoning administrator is the person who, the town ordinance has deemed is the person who is approving these plans, so that's why it says zoning administrator. Actually, the state of Virginia, zoning administrator is a Virginia thing, it's not a New York thing, so, it's a, it's different, but it's essentially the development department.
So is there really no town elected or appointed body that is going to approve after you approve?
No.
So you have a lot.
That would make it a very extensive process, they do that in the Harvard, in the Harvard district, and historic, but not general construction, and C three, that's why you.
But we're talking shared parking, we're not talking about a normal everyday development, we're talking about somebody wanted to use church parking for their business, or.
Correct.
And, and we are also, I think we said, the last time we talked about this, we said, once you get it, you've got it.
Right.
And it goes with the land as opposed to the, so.
Yep, that's what we, that's what we did. That's the way it was before, but that's, I don't think that says that in here.
So now it says in C eight, if you, any subsequent change in land uses, so if it's a grocery store and they wanna make a McDonald's, then they would have to submit, or I would have to, before we, before we allow that change, I would have to look into whether or not that shared parking arrangement and the studies that were provided at that time work with possible increase in parking, et cetera, for the new use.
But if, if it was the person who was giving the parking to the new person, if that changed the use, would it be the same thing?
No, this is, shared parking is, is different from what we talked about for the last time, the two landowners entering a contractual agreement. This is a study to say, here's what's happened in this particular region. And based on your hours, you know, your businesses are gone, and all of a sudden the theaters open up at night, and you have street parking, that's how you would address this shared parking arrangement here. So it's very different from what we talked about last time, where it's, it's, the church would have to agree that yes, you can use and have, enter contractual forever agreements. That's not necessarily what we're talking here. This is a study to say, let me look at a neighborhood and discuss parking relative to this neighborhood, and look at time zones and what have you, as to what the traffic counts.
So it's not two property owners entering into it?
Not this particular case, no.
Okay.
But if it was like the Patrick Hand Building where they have specifically identified these as residential parking, obviously you have to, there's, you have to have that discussion amongst, you know, it's gotta be an agreement with, with a property or a private.
What, what I had presented here was an alternative to what you had.
Yeah.
Not, not a substitute, so in my mind, what you had before on a contractual agreement can stand and say, okay, if you don't want to, then you can enter this kind of study arrangement under these various models and present.
So Paul, would you give me an example of what you're talking about?
Okay, so take two side by side businesses, and one has ample parking and doesn't foresee the need, and other businesses, I, I can't address the parking requirements in here, but I can using that parking spot.
But that was what we, I thought that.
Yes, and I, I'm proposing keep that element as well. The, what I was bringing to the table was an alternate to that, that if they didn't enter that, because that's, it's a hard and fast agreement that people most likely would not entertain.
Right.
So my alternative to that was this, there's models out there that, that people use called share, and that's where you take in a neighborhood, and there's no contractual agreements, it's a study that's done on a particular area to demonstrate you can meet the parking requirements based on what's in that neighborhood. At the time that you need.
Well, so let's take.
Correct.
So let's take what the town building across from Ray Fields.
Right.
So if that is going to be a kitchen and bathroom place to look at, you would need to say that somewhere around there, not really Ray Fields parking lot, but say going up Randolph or up Mason, there's enough parking to handle the hours that they're open.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's take the Keller Building, let's just say they put ten units in there, not that it could fit, ten units can go in here, they need ten parking spots, whatever. And I'd look at what can be parked on the street that's allowable, or what can be parked in front of the property there, but I may end up having to look at what's the impact to New Woods Garden, how often do they use that? How often is there overflow from Ray Fields, which is very unlikely, out onto the street, was his fault or not, can't adopt, so those are the kinds of reviews that you're putting down on paper based on actual technical approaches that people have used in, in models that haven't approved, that they would have to conduct, it's not easy. I've, I've seen some of the results on some of the examples that are, okay, that's what you could do, that's fine. But it's an alternate to say, I only can fit four parking spots in the Keller Building, and I can't meet your requirements for the other six, and I gotta find some other way.
And being as our population goes up in the summer, do we look at two times of the year to make sure that it would work?
They'd have to cover all aspects, all seasons, all night and day, and they have to come to the table, demonstrate that I've got it all covered, now, that doesn't mean five years down the road, things don't change, but at least they have ample evidence to convince you, I have adequate parking.
Yeah, and this C five says if possible, the survey should consider seasonal peak period for the combination of land use. And then, but this is, yeah, public parking, it's not.
Right, so I, I would retain what you had before, as, as another option if somebody wants to contractually enter it.
My, my, yeah, my thought was that you guys did not want any.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, it's, it's fine, but the likelihood to me was first land, and I needed another alternative to the table. Think we're going backwards. That's kind of our basis.
Okay, so are there any questions on C, other than what we just discussed?
Yeah. Just for my part, what does the last part of that paragraph mean?
So.
Seasonal peak period for the combination of land uses involved. Are we talking about parking or land use?
Well, the land use.
Is parking.
Yeah, the land use impacts the parking. So, if you have a bowling alley, or a harbor, or a restaurant. So, it's different.
School.
Yeah, yeah, school's out, then you take that into account with your shared parking.
Okay.
All right. G. Okay.
Okay, question for G one L.
Okay.
Maintenance for parking lots required. Uh huh, what happens if it isn't?
If, what happens if it's not maintained? So, then that, the town would be able to tell you, hey, for all reasons, you have to maintain your parking lot. You have to paint your stripes, you have to do those things. So, it's just like if, like, uh, I don't think ours says it, but fences in disrepair, you know? Hey, you have to, you have to fix your nets, you know, that's a financial. Or, or a good, good reasoning would be, or good thought would be, um, derelict buildings, you know? It's, the town can step in and say, hey, this is a danger, hey, this needs to be done per our town code. And you're not meeting that, so.
Will we have a penalty? Will we step in? And if we step in, how do we get our money back for doing it? Is that spelled out?
It is not, that's a good, that's a good thought. So, there's the opportunity of, or there's an option of bonds, requiring bonds for, um, there's maintenance bond, maintenance bonds and performance bonds. So, um, we could look into that of requiring those. So, like, for instance, bonds are good for landscaping. So, say you plant, you know, you plant trees, right? When you, you know, it's a requirement of the zoning ordinance to plant trees. You do that, but you're, the town's holding a bond and, um, it can hold that bond until those trees are mature for a two, I think it's a two-year time period or something like that. And then, at that two-year time period, once the, the town, they can request a, they can request a site visit, you know? And will say, hey, you know, you, you have two bed shrubs here, you gotta change those out and then we can release your bond, or something like that.
But, even after?
Yeah, I, I'm not looking at, as that, as a, as a, I don't wanna say a viable option. Uh, I think here, it, it's like cutting your lawns, right? It means send a notice and if they don't do it, the town will do it and they'll be charged, right? And so, I would, I would look at what is the means of violations for any of this stuff? Maintenance being, being probably the easiest one to go after. And if we have a standard way of dealing with violations, that's what this would want to throw in.
Yeah, right. Got you, got you, that's great. Okay.
We use what works.
Um, would you tell me what an infiltration swell would be here on G one G?
Um, so, it's, so, it'd be basically, I'm gonna look up info. I mean, we could look up on that. So, it's basically like a, a drainage system to treat stormwater. So, Bob Hennig could talk your ear off about these, this is what he deals with. But, um, but yeah, it's like, um, it's basically stormwater management. It's an aspect of stormwater management. So, you're directing, um, you're directing the stormwater to the infiltration swells so that they can then be carried into the stormwater instead of running onto the street or things like that.
Because, because we deal with, with, with the surfaces?
Right.
You gotta, you gotta find some way to get rid of, you know, distribute the water.
So, are we talking about something like this? A depression in, in this five-foot landscape area?
I don't think it necessarily has to be a depression.
Would it be underground height?
Yeah, it could be like an underground retain, like a, um, retaining system that then drains the underground. I mean, you can just Google, you know, infiltration swells and kinda shows you some.
And somewhere you said what has to be in that five-foot?
In that landscape strip, yeah.
What has to be in the landscaping there? Is it that big, or swell and landscaping?
Yeah, yeah, so, it incorporates the, the landscaping from, yeah, actually, a recent conversation with, with Bob Hennig is, you want it to be adequately landscaped so that the nutrient, or the, um, it sucks up bad things, essentially. The plants suck up the bad things and then allow, it clarifies the, the stormwater as it goes down into the bay or something like that, wherever the stormwater ends up.
Okay.
But, it would, it would look like a landscaped island. It wouldn't look like anything weird. It wouldn't, you wouldn't notice it unless you.
You wouldn't even notice there.
So, like, there's, uh, behind Patrick Hand's building, there's, um, B M Ps there, or along the harbor, uh, uh, town parking lot. And you just wouldn't even notice that they, you wouldn't even know they were there because they're underneath the gravel and the plantings. So.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on G? Let me know if you want me to clarify anything. Um, compact parking spaces. So. Any questions on compact parking spaces?
Probably, I don't know if we ever have a place that would have.
I don't know, probably not.
Drawn.
You never know with the Harvard being developed, so. Yeah, thirty more. How much does the gravel lot have?
Eighty feet.
Oh, eighty, but it's a linear answer.
It has eighty?
Yeah.
I, compact parking.
Well, how does this work with Paul's idea?
So, it would go similar with, or. Uh, no, it's actually part of C, sorry. So, there is a aspect of C, shared parking, that, um, from. A formal parking setting may be waived by the zoning administrator for small developments where there is established experience with the land use mix and its impact is, is expected to be minimal. So, it could correlate with a smaller scale development where I wouldn't just say, you can waive it, but we'll also look at how the tree parking. I don't know, it's a, that's a good question, so, we can take that out. Because that was, that was put in before I updated that, I shared parking. I'm trying to think of where it would.
Yeah, I think it's a program out too.
These are definitions, so.
Oh, no, stacking spaces. I'm not next.
Okay, yeah, we can skip the definitions, we'll get the definitions at the end. Um, yeah, stacking spaces.
Which is only in certain zones, right? The ability to have.
Yeah, it's a drive-through.
Okay, stop.
So, like, Ray Fields is a good example.
So, this is super bad, like, there was a Krispy Kreme that opened in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And it was literally, it was like pouring out and going way down like a main highway because everyone wanted Krispy Kreme. So, it was, it was bad. So, this is to mitigate some of that. I'm sure that they already had that open in Tuscaloosa, it was just Krispy Kreme and you can't, can't refuse Krispy Kreme, but. Um.
To the electric lighter.
Okay. Landscaping parking lots.
Okay. I have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, since I have a lot of questions about this, do we want to, you and I talk it over and then, at the next time we have any?
Yeah, that, that'd be pretty good because.
Okay.
It's good, it's good.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I, I will say, I wanna say that the single-family residential districts have very disturbed, you know, this. Very disturbed. And I'm telling you, if you don't have better things for recreational vehicles and boats, you are going to.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, I saw that and I, I know that we have permission. And I don't know, where, where is this in the town council's, uh, they're awake, where you discuss this? Yeah, that was taken, um, once it was approved at the state level. Seela took that on to draft something. Okay. And, and I have not seen, so she may have submitted something to the library, right?
So, I, I think we have got to just not have this yet.
So, the, the idea behind this is, Bay Creek is a prime example. It has very strict regulations on, you're not gonna see a car parked in the grass, you know?
Right.
In the middle of the, in the middle of the lawn, things like that, that you do sometimes see in big draws. So, this is to mitigate that.
Well, what, no, I'm talking about like recreational vehicles on residential properties. So, this would allow you to have one on your property and then you could have another one in a car park in closed valley, or you could park it on the street.
Well.
That's two recreational vehicles right there. And that does not include golf carts, so golf carts aren't considered here. So, we're talking something.
Well, we, you know, you know that, that the town submitted to the general assembly.
Yes.
And the general assembly approved it. So, we have control over recreational vehicles, boats, trailers on V dot roads, the town, our, which owns all the town roads. And we have to say so, that's what Seela's doing is, is coming up with something.
And that's what I'm saying, if Seela's doing it, should we be approving something and Seela does something else? That's kind of what I'm saying.
Yes, well, this is, yeah, I understand what you're saying. This is different in the sense that it's on your property. It will push vehicles onto designated streets that the town council appoints as streets that are okay to have these types of vehicles and streets that are not okay to have these types of vehicles. That's fine, I, I'm just saying, this is a, personally, I think this is a big aspect of a, of a good, when you drive into town, you don't see cars parked in your driveways and people pulled up on the lawns and stuff. That's just personal preference, but.
That part doesn't bother me. Honestly, though, these recreational vehicles and boats, well, we have to address them, we have to. And if Seela's working on it, then I don't think we should make any kind of changes to our property stuff.
Well, we'll have to talk, because she's really street parking. And if you're doing it on residential property, you gotta think she was going there.
This is only residential property.
No.
The idea is that it pushes it, it, it restricts what you can have. So, if you have two boats and you don't have a concealed, a structure that you can put one of those boats in, then that boat can't be parked on your property, so what happens?
But, it can be parked on the street.
Exactly, so, Seela is addressing where it can be parked on the street. We're addressing where it cannot be parked two or one or more unless it's infrastructure on your actual, on your actual property.
So, I'm still gonna say the same.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, she's, she's lucky, she's lucky in that she's gonna come up with something, because I'm sure there's, she'll, she'll, she'll come up with something.
I would say more contained than that.
Yeah.
We're, one concern I have is on Randolph in particular, on those sides of the street with large recreational vehicles, boats.
Sometimes.
It becomes dangerous.
It is, I mean, for example, it was.
Cars are passing on the streets.
There was a rec, there was a rec veh, there was a rec vehicle parked at the corner of Fig and Randolph. And switched sides. And if you were coming to the stop sign on Fig, you couldn't see around it. I mean, you had to pull out. I mean, you gotta be very careful, I mean, so.
Which is what Seela's addressing.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
Access management.
Do we want, are we going through this?
Can we, can we, can we, uh, can we just, it's, it's seven twenty-five. Can we just, uh, put everything until the next, till the next meeting? Anybody, anybody, uh, any commissioners, uh, just approve of that? Okay, so, other business? Any other business?
I'll just, I'll just make a comment that, uh, since this is October, last month is only month last year.
Right, and we have, and we do meet on the first Tuesday. And it's already been a draw for my thing and we met, and we've met, we've met before and. I need to pay.
Yep.
This is.
Just like.
Just like. Any announcements?
I do have a good business.
Good.
Um, so, there's a possible grant through the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. For, basically, it's through the Eastern Shore, all the communities, is how I know about it. And, uh, it's for increased physical activity, anything that would increase physical activity for youth or adults. Uh, and Mike had mentioned when we're doing the, the trees and the benches on Washington, the possibility of like workout, you know, like workout equipment, um, like outdoor workout equip, kinda like, not necessarily equipment, but.
Like a, what do you call those things? Stations.
Stations, yeah. Yeah, or like Eastville has a little section by their town hall or, or their.
I think it would be a good idea, uh, for considering that, hoping the health that it's used. I know we couldn't then operate before, they just got destroyed as those two moves.
Yeah, this was just a, this was a suggestion.
But, I like the idea perhaps in a park or something, you know, in one central area.
I mean, and, and this is the, that was one suggestion, but if you have any other suggestions or ideas that we could pursue for a grant specifically to increase physical activity.
Could it, could it be something like, uh, pickleball lines on the second tennis court?
I'm sure it is.
Because the pickle, with the pickleball lines, those courts are getting used.
Yeah, that's a good.
Good idea. Diane, too. The idea of putting something in the proximity of the park is a really good idea because, to be honest, I have a bird's eye view of the playground and it's being used by a lot of adults. And that children's playground is not designed for adults.
Yeah.
So, we need something that gives them something to play.
You mean like a basketball court?
No, not, that, that is one option, but we, we need to explore whatever that is, okay? Because it's needed and I think it probably needs to be in that proximity.
Now, uh, to that topic, you may change the median age, but the issue will be the same. If you put, if you put nearby or, you know, within stone throw from, or in, in kids' recreation area, put, put hoops, you may have the same issue. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying don't do it there.
The same issue.
As, as the adults using the space now. Block, you know, pushing the kids out kind of thing. Understood?
Yeah, but I think that was the reason we used for so many years that we don't have one and yet.
Yeah, I know, that, that's, yeah. Yeah, I know, that, that's, yeah, I, I totally agree with you, that's, that's not my point.
Yeah.
My, my point is to make sure everybody's needs get met, that's all, that's important.
Doesn't that expand and include walkability in general, because the walking is a physical activity, you know, if there's a sign that says, you know, fifty years ago, there used to be such, such at this site or that sort of thing, that would make, it'd make it more interesting and so.
Stormmarkers?
Extra exercise, but anything to make the walk more interesting will make it, it seem like it's going out faster.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Are you talking about like on Washington Avenue?
I've had it in mind, but it could be, cause anywhere on the trail area and that sort of thing.
You have a little marker there where the, all the pylons are at the north end of the beach, you know, what that used to be, you know, I mean, so.
We had a bigger theater community, lunchtime skits, I've seen that done, but I don't think, I don't think we're there yet. But anything that makes it more interesting walking, that's, I think that's the point, to get people to walk and, and then make it an effective walk.
The, um, current Cape Charles Historic Map, the fold-up, the, uh, park park report is, is a good, great place to start if we wanna add to that, because that actually gives you a lot of that current information now. As you walk around town, some of those historical landmarks are in there, so we can add to that.
Yeah, that's it.
About walking chores?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's like something that needs to be physical or if it can be like a program, I'd have to look more into it as to like the parameters of it, but.
Yeah, Saturday mornings, a ten-ish, you'd get a ton on the day, I would pick them around and all, and so.
I know.
It's possible.
And I've been talking to him.
I think the, the current plan still mentions something like that, it just takes people to do it, a self, a self.
Self, actually.
Yeah. You can put on headphones or something.
Okay, any other, other business? Announcements? Okay, so we're gonna meet, have a work session on the twenty-first, at seven P M here to discuss.
Seven, seven.
Specific events.
Sure, I'll be at seven.
And we will have a meeting on election day in November.
Yep, so, six o'clock.
We're all supporting our I voted, second.
Yeah, of course.
Any other announcements? We have a motion to adjourn.
No, we're second.
All in favor?